Okay. Let me welcome folks to our Select Board meeting for... Tonight is Tuesday, June 6, 2023. The hour is 7:00 PM. And before we follow our tradition of rising and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to just mention that hopefully it's not lost on everyone, but June 6, 1944, 79 years to the day. We recognize D-Day. And to be frank, I think that was the largest military effort that the world has ever seen. I've had the privilege and honor of being at the American Cemetery in Normandy a couple of times. And there are 9,386 military buried in that American Cemetery. It's hallowed ground. And I think all of us in the room here and anyone who is watching or listening tonight can hopefully appreciate that without the sacrifice of those many veterans nearly 80 years ago. The life and lifestyle that we all enjoy would not be possible. So I ask you to keep them in mind because 79 years have passed and they all sacrificed to the ultimate level so we could have what we have as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in rising.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We have a couple of hearings out of the gate this evening. The first two pertain to petitions by National Grid and Verizon on joint-owned pole petitions. The first one scheduled for 7:00 PM pertains to 105 East Street. I'll read the hearing notice. That notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 6, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall located at 1,009 Main Street on the jointly-owned pole petition from National Grid and Verizon to install a new pole, number 104-50, within existing pole line approximately 50 feet westerly from an existing pole, number 105 East Street, Tewksbury, in order to install a new recloser to improve reliability. And detail has been provided to the town by National Grid relative to that petition. I believe someone's present from the utility? Yeah? Thank you, sir. You can just introduce yourself if you don't mind.
Dave Boucher, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street.
Thanks, Dave.
North End over.
I appreciate your presence here. So is there any detail that you can share with us beyond what I just read?
Just a quick addition to what you said. It's kind of like plain and simple as you said, right near Shawsheen and East Streets, we want to place a new pole approximately 50 feet away from an existing one to place a recloser. That recloser will work in conjunction with the neighboring pole where we have load break, and it enables us to switch circuits when power goes out from the feeders, from the This was engineered by one of my co-engineers, and I actually did one on Daskem Road, not very far from here, because that's right near the end of the line. Right over Daskem Road, there's another one going in too. So it'll look a little bit busy on the poles, but it'll enable us to, as I say, restore power when it goes out and feed people with power while we make repairs to our lines.
And you're not removing the existing pole, right? You're adding a new pole, is that right?
No. This petition is just for one, adding one pole to the pole line as it's shown.
Okay. All right. And I'll note for the public's benefit, we have correspondence from the Director of Public Works, Kevin Hardeman, dated May 26. And he is indicating that DPW, Public Works Department, has reviewed the proposal relative to this particular request, and they are in support of the proposal subject to two conditions, that National Grid shall secure a physical alteration permit from the DPW for the installation within the town's right-of-way but outside of the paved roadway, and two, that National Grid shall ensure that the proposed installation does not come in conflict with the town's infrastructure in the project area, including water lines, sewer lines, and stormwater infrastructure. And while we're at it, I might add, hopefully sidewalks. It's not in the correspondence, but we've talked about that before. So let me ask if my colleagues have specific questions?
I just have the typical... The design of the pole, did you... I know there's existing poles out there, but this is an area that there was proposed additional sidewalks going to be installed. Is this... Does this leave room for the installation of sidewalks along there where the poles are going in?
Well, the pole's only about 18 inches wide at the greatest.
I get that.
Yeah, yeah.
But sometimes the pole's up at the front, and sometimes it's in the back. So is the pole in the middle of where a proposed sidewalk may go?
We would, if anything, we would have it to one side and preferably the field side rather than the roadside, too, away from it, and leaving you, in a normal instance, five feet, because I know that, I believe that the state handicap area, we always want to leave a room for that. I think that's four feet. So I would imagine it will get placed on the field side with the grasses if we can.
Okay.
You know? And if not, it's not going to be right in the middle of like a sidewalk. That would be the last thing we would do. I mean, I wouldn't... That's not good practice.
I agree. I agree. It's not a good practice, but unfortunately, the practice has happened a lot. So I just want to make sure when we're installing this that there's, you know, the room is left there for it. There's many, many places in Tewksbury, we have a pole sitting in the middle of a sidewalk.
Oh, sure.
So, I mean, obviously, that practice happened.
It... I don't know, I'm not sure it's intended to happen that way, but it also can be a pole that's in the place, and then you can come along with the sidewalk afterwards and, you know, it's...
And that's the whole reason for this conversation.
Yeah.
Prior to, I want National Grid to take into consideration, even if there's not sidewalks there, that we may be putting sidewalks in there eventually, and to try to keep it to the back of the layout.
Yep, okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the room that has any comments on this particular matter? All right. I don't see anyone rising, so, and I don't believe my other colleagues have any questions or comments, so if that's the case, I'd ask for a motion to address this matter.
Close the public hearing.
You want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All right. So the motion was offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Is there now any motion on action that the board wants to take?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the pole petition indicated in the hearing room.
Thank you. The motion's made by Ms. Wellman. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Kratman seconds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there anyone opposed? I will vote in the affirmative, so that's a five to zero vote on that one. You can stay right there, sir, while I read this hearing notice. Our 7:05 hearing is... That notice is hereby given that the Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 6, 2023 in the Town Hall, 1,009 Main Street, on the jointly-owned pole petition from National Grid and Verizon to relocate Pole 1, Lake Street, approximately three to four feet away from the road, and install new support Pole 1-84 with anchor in order to accommodate requests by the town of Tewksbury. So this is initiated by the town, and we do have correspondence from Mr. Hardeman dated May 26, and he is repeating the same conditions that he mentioned that I read a few moments ago. So do you have any other comment on this one, sir?
Yeah, just quickly to explain, for anyone who isn't familiar with that intersection, the town was asking for us to do some work there because there's two trees that the town wants to take away, and one of them has a guy wire in it. One of the old practices when they went down the street was to do that, and it was an easier way 50, 100 years ago, whenever that went in. So it's in the tree that they want, that the town's going to take away, and what we need is that brand-new pole, 1-84, to support our pole line that is on Lake Street. The second part of this petition, just to reiterate it, is to move the Pole 1 approximately three or four feet, and that will get it away from, it'll straighten out our electric line, and I believe there is a tree right there, too, that is large, and I believe the town's going to take away. So we're asking for two things, is a brand-new pole and an existing pole to move three to four feet.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any questions on this one?
I have one question.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just briefly, from the language, it doesn't indicate it, but I'm going to ask it anyway, if the anchor is on private property, is there a requirement for an easement at all?
If it lands there, yes, but as it's shown there in our diagram that we've provided, it should land in the public way.
It should land in the public way.
Yeah. We always get, if it does land on a private property, we would have to get an easement. But the intent, at least at this point, is to land it right in the public way and not have to bother any residents.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Let me ask if anyone in the room has any comment on this matter. I don't see anyone rising, so may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right. So the motion's offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll make that unanimous. And are there any motions by my colleagues on action they wish to take?
I'll make a motion to approve the joint-owned pole petition for Lake Street.
Okay. Motion is offered by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll make that unanimous, five to zero as well. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yep.
Okay. Our 710 agenda item is a matter pertaining to La Vida Dolce LLC, and this involves an amended liquor license. I think there's representatives, and if you want, at least two of you can come up here, grab a chair.
Due to me and everybody with the place, I figured I'd stop more.
No worries.
But we're all very equal amongst...
Understood, understood. So just so we can capture for the record, if you could both just give us your name and address, that would be appreciated.
Tard A Arson Alt, 39 Hargene Road, Delrick, Mass.
Thank you.
Ronald Pereira, 40, David Morris Road, Tewksbury, Mass.
Very good. Thank you and welcome. Okay. So as I understand it, we actually all, hopefully, will recall, we had a hearing not long ago in which we approved your application. It went to the ABCC, and a special investigator from the ABCC reviewed all the documentation and referred it back with no action to the local authority, that being this board. They made recommendations relative to information that was required on question number six and also on question number eight, and it appears to me that you have amended your application or revised your application to specifically address those two questions, and I want to give you an opportunity to fill in any blanks. Is there anything else you want to add about that process?
No, as it says there, I believe they just wanted everybody involved.
Okay.
And depositally, unfortunately, how many kids at sports are having a hard time getting in today?
There you go. Okay. All right. So my colleagues should note under the yellow page, the revised application with that pertinent information, and I'll just ask if they have any questions. We can ask the applicants to answer. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion. All right. I don't hear any...
No, I have a couple.
Do you have a question, Ms. Wellman?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. It's nice to see you again.
How are you?
Have you used an attorney to prepare your documents for the ABCC?
No.
I would recommend that you do that. Almost every business that comes before us for these kinds of things, even for common victualer license, uses attorneys.
Okay.
And we're accustomed to seeing that.
Okay.
I read the changes that you made. I didn't see any further financial documentation. There was no banking information included with this. Do you have that for the ABCC?
Yes, they...
We usually require that as part of our...
Okay. We can forward the also...
Application.
Volume in this.
Good. Volume in, yes. I'm with you. Where, there was no floor plan included in your application. Where do you plan on serving alcohol from?
The original floor plan, I saw it was a cafe bar. That's where the alcohol will be served.
And you're going, you're asking for an all-alcohol license? Am I correct?
Yes.
And so are you doing, how do you plan on selling the different categories of alcohol? Beer and wine, liqueurs, martini, you know, mixed drinks? What's your, what's your plan? Are you installing draft lines?
We're doing beer, wine, martinis. We're not promoting shots. We're not serving shots.
Three-drink maximum.
Yeah. We're doing...
There's a three-drink maximum, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. How will you be carding and ensuring the age of your clients for alcohol service?
Oh, physically. You'll be physically, you have to produce identification, or you wouldn't be served a drink.
Okay. Will there be a point-of-sale piece, or will you be giving it at the bar?
That would be at the bar, point-of-sale.
Okay, okay. In some of the materials I've read and in the report, the documentation from the state, there are discrepancies, it seems, about how much money was invested versus how much money is included on the financial disclosure, and I'm wondering if you can address that.
Well, due to, all of us have our own construction companies, the discrepancy was the amount of how much it cost us to do. And as I think everybody knows, if you own the company that does it, you save multitudes of dollars.
So it's sort of a valuation, sort of a in-kind work that your companies have done to contribute to the renovation of the property?
Yes. For instance, for John to tile the place might cost $60,000 to someone, ask the $30 for us.
I see. Okay. I don't see that included in your financial disclosure, but that's why I'm asking the question.
So the financial disclosure, once we came to, we had a much higher price on it because we put the value.
Sure.
And she said, "I wanted to see more concrete of what it was." That's why it's changed to what it, it's actually lowered from what it was.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any more questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? And if not, may I ask for any motions my colleagues wish to make?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended liquor license application for La Vida Dolce.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holland, for seconding that. So we have a motion to approve the revised application, and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well. So that's five to zero. So you're back to the ABCC, and we wish you well.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
All right. The next item is a similar request. This involves Niltkant 345 Inc., doing business as City Wine Spirits and Smoke Shop. Is there a representative from that organization present? Okay. I don't see anybody here. This, too, was a similar situation where the original filing had an address error. When the investigator went to inspect or view the premises, there was a going enterprise in the address that had been provided, and there was a necessary change required to be made to the lease as well. And my colleagues will recognize that behind the yellow separator page, we have a revised purchase and sale agreement reflecting the corrected address, and we have a revised lease with that same correction. And I believe that those are the two changes that were recommended and have been made and offered. We obviously don't have someone here to speak to it, but if my colleagues are satisfied with those two revisions, I'll entertain any motions they wish to make.
So the applicant was notified that we got a public hearing tonight, correct?
It's actually not a public hearing. It's on the agenda.
Yeah. From the agenda, okay. Seeing that this is something that, it just seems like there were simple changes amended on it, and I really didn't have any questions, I'll make a motion to approve the amended liquor license application for Niltkant 345 Incorporated, DBA, City Wine Spirit, and Smoke Shop.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman, for making the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Wellman offers a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be unanimous as well. Okay. We have one more scheduled item, and that is a common victualer license application. Mr. Singh, I'm going to guess. Why don't you pull up a chair? Thank you. So this is an application for the establishment named Taste of the Himalayas LLC, located at 1921 Main Street here in Tewksbury, and you must be Mr. Singh. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, welcome. You want to just tell us a little bit about your business?
Right. It's actually, it was a previous business of mine, Safran Indian Grill.
Yeah.
We had shut down the pandemic. We relaunched as The Taste of the Himalayas.
Is that right?
Most of the food is the same concept with a few Himalayan regional dishes that were added.
Okay. All right. Is the floor plan that you attached, is it any different than what was previously used?
No. It's the same use.
Okay.
Same seating, capacity.
So just a company name change?
Yes.
Corporate, corporate structure change?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Do my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Singh? If not, can I ask for a motion on this common victualer license?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the common victual license for Taste of the Himalayas.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Kratman. So that would bring us to, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative as well. So that's a five to zero vote. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Welcome back.
Have a great night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any residents in the room tonight? I see two of you here. I don't know if you're both residents, but if you have any comments, this is the time to offer those. Nope? Okay, thank you. So we'll move to new business, and that brings us to board and committee reappointments. My colleagues have a one-page document in their packets, and I'm going to have to run through each of these committees because they're all different terms, and I'm going to ask for motions and votes on these. I was informed that all of the individuals noted here have affirmatively requested reappointment in concert with the process that we follow and would fill or refill seats that either are currently held by them or, you know, they took a vacancy along the last year that we approved previously. So let me start with the board of registrars. David Chu. This would be a three-year term. I believe that might be by statute.
Yes.
So if I could ask for a motion to reappoint Mr. Chu to the board of registrars?
So moved. Second.
Okay. So motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey, and I'm going to repeat it again for the record so we capture it correctly in the minutes, but that would be for a three-year term. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll vote in the affirmative, making that five to zero. We have Christopher Mullins seeking reappointment for a one-year term to the Community Preservation
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Mullins.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. That would be unanimous. Mr. Daniel Ronan seeks reappointment to the Conservation Commission, which is a three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair will make that unanimous as well. The Council on Aging, there are two individuals, Donna Bell, Kathleen Walsh. They're both Select Board appointees. Their terms would be for three years.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion offered by Mr. Kratman and seconded by Ms. Wellman, and just for clarity, we're reappointing both, right?
Both for three.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. We have four individuals seeking reappointment to the Economic Development Committee, Arthur Costa, Danielle Corsino, Patricia Lelos, and Timothy Swett. This would be for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. That would be unanimous. Mr. Tom Cook seeks the town residency on the Green Committee, one-year term.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman. Is there a second? Mr. Mackey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous. We have Karen Favreau, Linda Vautour, Nancy Reed, and Patricia Stratus, all seeking reappointment to the Local Historic District Study Committee. That would be a one-year term.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion offered by Ms. Wellman. Is there a second? By Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. That would be unanimous. Michelle Haley and Terry Musgrave are requesting reappointment to a three-year term on the Massachusetts Cultural Council.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mackey offers a motion, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That's unanimous. The following people are reapplying to be appointed to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. That involves a one-year term. The applicants are Bruce Schick, Joanne Brace, John Buckley, Karen Sliver, Paige Impink, Peter Chase, Raymond Bowden, Susan Young, Tom Branchode.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye on that as well, making that unanimous. Daniel Ronan, Jennifer Balk Kenny, Kathy McGinnis, Paige Impink, and Tracy Skahan. All are seeking reappointment to a one-year term on the Tewksbury Divification Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Aaron Kelly, Kim San Yen, and Mason Dunn, all are requesting reappointment for a one-year term to the Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion offered by Ms. Wellman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll make that unanimous. And last, Daniel Texera, Joseph Carey, and Michael Farnum, all are requesting reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Each of those would be three-year terms.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kratman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, making that unanimous. So I believe the reappointment slips will appropriately reflect the terms that we just went through, and hopefully the minutes will tie to those as well. Next order of business, we have fire department detail assignments, and my colleagues have a list in front of them. I would note that one of them, Jacob Brothers, should be stricken from the list that you have, and therefore, I'm going to ask for the board to approve the following fire department personnel to be eligible for detail assignments. They would be Christina Merrill, Justin Lammerow, Caitlin Callahan, Patrick Brothers, Braden Tangway, Henry Roberts, Charles Lucia, and John O'Leary.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion offered by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. All right, that brings us to two matters pertaining to property abatement requests. The first item involves 2347 Main Street. You should have a memo dated May 30 from Assistant Town Manager Sadwick. And the history pertaining to this property is that the Select Board and the Conservation Commission in March of this year accepted the property as being conveyed to the town. It was conveyed on April 12, 2023, to be used for open space. The chief assessor has informed the administration that the Select Board needs to request an abatement on the remaining taxes for this fiscal year, as we were not the owners of the property in January 2023, and an abatement request would also be necessary for fiscal year 2024. And I think there's correspondence, Mr. Montori might have it, that actually has the dollar amount involved. Do you have that in?
I do. So for FY '23, it's approximately $910, and for FY '24, it's estimated to be $4,300. So I would recommend that the board just simply vote to abate the FY '23 tax, because it could be a little bit off the 910, and I don't want...
And FY '25.
And same with FY '24.
Okay. All right, are there any questions on that? Could I ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the abatement of taxes for 2347 Main Street for 2023 and 2024.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kratman, for offering the motion, and Mr. Holland for seconding it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. And then the second half of that request involves 60 Winterberry Avenue, or, excuse me, 60 Winterberry Lane. Again, this was deeded to the town as open space, and we would ask for the same vote relative to fiscal year '23. The taxes are estimated at $29, and for fiscal '24, $150.
I have a question.
Ms. Wellman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was no information on this abatement in our packet. This, I think, was added today, is that correct? Yeah. So I'm looking at the map on my phone for the folks at home. This is a parcel that's at the end of a cul-de-sac that's supposed to be for open space for the town?
Correct.
Okay. Not really great.
I apologize for last-minute ad, but we figured we'd clear them both up this night.
Sure. Just wanted to make sure I was clear.
Yep. Okay. Any further questions? If not, does anyone wish to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so Mr. Holland, moving to request abatement for fiscal '23 and fiscal '24 on 60 Winterberry Lane. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you also just remind us of the amount?
It was $29 approximately, and $150 for the second year.
Thank you.
All right, so we have second by Ms. Wellman to the motion by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well, making that a five to zero vote. Okay. We have a matter of thanks here. The Tewksbury Garden Club, in appreciation for a use of the Senior Center facilities for their meetings, made a donation to the town of Tewksbury in the amount of $250. I believe we need to formally accept that.
Correct.
So let me ask if there's a motion on that matter.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with gratitude.
Second, with gratitude.
Thank you, Ms. Wellman and Mr. Holland, for your gratitude. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will make that unanimous as well. Those funds go to a revolving fund or a general fund?
We set up a gift account.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager. How much money is in the gift account?
I'd have to go back, but it's not a lot. It's like hundreds of dollars.
And these gifts that we get, for various reasons, none of them are given for any particular use.
Sometimes they are, and sometimes they're not. On this particular use, just for the senior center.
Okay.
And usually spent pretty fast.
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask one question, since you're on that subject? Have we used any of those funds?
We have, and I can give more information for the board and send it out to you. We have gift accounts for the Senior Center. We have gift accounts for the Veterans Services Department, and we've had gift accounts for police and fire. So I can get you a list of them.
As long as we're using them.
Yeah, we are using them.
Okay, that's all I care.
It'd be good to get a hand along with the other.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Montori. All right, that brings us to your portion of the agenda. So you have a couple of things, or two or three things you want to talk about tonight.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of things just to go over with the board. I have two PowerPoint presentations and just two things, other couple of things I just want to mention. First is in regard to liquor establishment compliance checks. Over the past week to 10 days, the police department has been conducting compliance checks for underage drinking. Prior to conducting the work, the police department held a meeting with all the liquor establishments regarding underage drinking. They sent 49 letters out to all the establishments, informing them of the importance of carding individuals who come into their establishments in order to ensure there is no underage drinking. Of the 49 letters that were sent out, 14 establishments attended the virtual meeting that the chief held. Four others asked for the recording of the meeting. As I mentioned, the work has already started over the last couple of weeks, and it will continue for the next, you know, couple of weeks. And this is, again, just to let the board know, those establishments that may follow the meetings know that the police department is doing this. They've been sending out information on social media, so if someone is caught not, is caught providing alcohol to underage individuals, then there is no excuse that they did not know. So the word is out, and once it's complete, we'll have a report for the board.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to just thank the police department for pursuing that. I know we did that, I think, last year, maybe a couple of years in a row. And if my recollection is correct, we did have some violations, and I believe those that were in violation were organizations or businesses that did not attend these discussions. So I certainly would encourage the business owners to make sure their staffs are up to speed, because I don't think this board would look too lightly on any violations. And I wish if we had 49 establishments selling liquor, that we had more than 18 of them attend the meeting, or at least review the recording. It's a little disappointing, in my opinion, but...
Is there any future stings without notice?
There might be. Sometimes the ABCC doesn't.
Next Tuesday.
We can't tell you. It does happen, but most of the time, we try to give notice.
It makes it, is it so, a little bit easier to stand up in front of?
The ABC doesn't.
The ABCC.
The ABC does not need to give us notice that they're coming in.
Correct.
Yep. So, you know, this is peak season for that stuff, and hopefully, the business community here has witnessed, we've suspended licenses and the not-too-distance pass, and hopefully, everyone will do the right thing and take care of what they need to, because it, not only is a danger to the youth of the community, which is obviously a primary concern, but there's no question that it has an economic consequence if a license is suspended for a period of time. And I know everybody is doing their best to try to stay profitable and strong economically. So word to the wise, and I appreciate you bringing that to us tonight, Mr. Montori.
Okay, so the next item is one of the two PowerPoints I just want to go through with the board. The first, I just want to give an update on water quality and water distribution, very high level. It's the construction season, springtime, going into summer. We've already had a couple of hot days. So I just want to go through some items that are usually, topics that are usually brought up, and just remind the board and the general public on these items. The first that I want to mention is in regard to brown water. Get a fair amount of complaints regarding brown water, spring, summer, summer mostly, but goes into the fall also. You know, the water that leaves the plant, it's important to note, is cleaner than most bottled water that we purchase, and many of us do purchase bottled water. The brown water is caused by a residual iron in the system from metals and fittings, et cetera. The brown water is not due to lack of treatment at the filtration plant. It has nothing to do with that. It's not harmful to drink. We're not recommending you drink it, but just in case someone does, it's not harmful. However, it can leave stains on light-colored clothing. The iron deposits that settle into the system over the course of a year, especially in the winter when usage is lower than it is in the spring and the summer. So the brown water occurs in the system, and when we have higher-than-normal usage of flow. And that causes the iron deposits to be agitated in the water pipes. Examples of high flow are in the summer months when there's higher usage. As a good example, this past week, we had a higher-than-normal usage of water because of the hot weather. I think it was 50% higher than normal. So when there's high usage on the hot days, outdoor usage is more, we tend to see brown water. And when there are water breaks, because the amount of water that comes out of the pipe when there's a break, large volumes of water, we also see brown water in those areas of the break. Again, the hot days last week, the filtration plant had water production increase by 50%. The DPW does have a hydrant flushing program that helps, but we can't, it does reduce the brown water, sometimes eliminates it, but, you know, we can't do the entire town. We do portions of town during the year. If residents do experience brown water, they should contact the DPW. They should also refrain from washing any light-colored clothes in the laundry, and run their cold water faucets to help clean out the brown water. Again, just going back to usage from last week, when we started to hear complaints, we usually average 2.8 million gallons a day of water in May. We typically run 3 million gallons a day in June. During that week, when it was hot, we ran 3.5 million gallons a day. So it was higher than normal, and that was just for those, you know, those days. The next item I wanted to just talk about, because again, when brown water comes up and there are issues, people start to question the quality of the water, and they go back to when we had the TTHM issue back in August of '21. TTHMs are a group of volatile and potentially toxic chemicals that are formed in the drinking water from a chemical reaction of a disinfectant of chlorine and organic compounds. Those are found because we use chlorine to disinfect our drinking water, and the Wolf Mar water treated in the Merrimack does contain organic matter. So the combination of that impacts the level of TTHMs that we could have in our drinking water. They can be harmful if consumed at levels above the maximum contamination level. That maximum contamination level that EPA and DEP use when monitoring systems is 20 nanograms per liter. That's what they use. We are well below that. We did go over that in August of '21. We need to go, we needed to go through a series of notifications to the residents, and we needed to sample more often. But we do sample quarterly. We make sure the samples are 90 days apart, and we've had no issues since that time. The samples are measured through a laboratory process. They can't be eliminated entirely, but we do monitor them on a quarterly basis. We are within the regulations, and there are no issues. The next item that I wanted to just mention, because this does come up also during water breaks, has to do with the water system notifications when we do have water breaks, when we notify people, you know, why do we do sometimes, and why don't we do other times? The system that we use to notify during emergencies would be the code RED system for water breaks and water emergencies. We also use social media and websites to post water outages. Both are interchangeable, depending on the situation. The variability around the water breaks would include the severity of the break, the population impacted, the expected duration, the location. Sometimes we have water breaks that may impact a couple of houses, and we'll notify those houses in person. So it just depends on the type of break that we have. And then our ability to send out the messages depends on the time of day, because not all staff can utilize the website. If it breaks during the day, we can easily post it on the website and on social media through the DPW staff. If it's resolved during that workday, we also post a follow-up. But if it happens in the middle of the night, or after hours, it becomes more difficult, and the initial notice may be delayed, and the follow-up may be delayed. We try to use the police department to help us get the word out, but as far as the DPW getting the information out of the website or on their social media, the staff that's responding to the breaks don't have that ability. And a lot of times, they may not even notify the police department because their focus is taking care of the break. So that's how we notify residents in regard to any breaks or issues that come up. I think we've gotten better. Obviously, we can always improve, but that's the approach we take. And then finally, this is just a high-level list of the projects going on. In town, Bay State Road neighborhood Phase II is awaiting final closeout. Pike Street, Nastle Street, work is completed. Permanent trench paving remains, and punch list items remain. Hood, Clegg, Hunt, Trull, and Guile, construction began 5/17/23. School Street, waterline punch list items are remaining and final closeout. Whipple Road, the installation of the pipe is near complete, if not complete, and then we'll start with the service connections. Victor Drive, construction anticipated to be done during school summer break, and completed during school summer break. We're in the process of designing a new water line for Fifth Street, and then we're also designing for the Beach Street neighborhood. And that's water. Any questions? I know it's pretty high-level.
I do. So water breaks. I know we're getting... I know we're getting, you said, higher-than-usual level, and that was some of the reasons for the brown water in some locations. Or was it, were the water breaks near some of those locations, or was it just sediment sitting in the thing, and then it was flushing through, or both?
It just, you know, depending on when the complaints came in, we did have some water breaks because of the work on Whipple Road. But the complaints that we heard and we saw really had to do with the high volume of water being used during those hot days.
Is there, I mean, we've been talking about this for the last couple of years, and residents call complaining, and then the complaints are, oh, you know, we can give you something to dilute your water and get the stains out of your things. Is there anything that, like, the residents can do to their water? I mean, with the brown water, would a filter, like, a personal filtration system in their house help with that? Or is there something that, I'm trying to think of something that would help the residents stop this if they need to purchase it, or is there any, have we looked into any of that?
I don't think any filtration, I can check, but I don't think any filtration system's going to correct that. It's just, the system just needs to clean itself out.
All right. And so, now, we're getting to the time of the year where all the kids are getting out of school, and everybody's going to be filling their pools. And so, we're going to have a bunch of residents filling their pools up probably with town water, and they're going to be paying for it. And then, if the pool is filled with brown water, is there a way to contact the DPW, maybe drain it and try to fill it again, and get an abatement on it? Or is there anything that, it just, if something like that happens, where somebody uses, you know, 50,000 gallons, and you don't notice it while you're flowing it, because you won't until it settles, and then, all of a sudden, you're sitting there, and you've got a pool sitting in your backyard with brown water, is there anything, is there any way that the town can, or is there a better time to maybe contact the DPW and say, I'm thinking about filling my pool? Is there a concern now, or has anybody flushed this area, or is there a question? I'm just trying to work away that I know what's going to happen. People are going to be complaining. Is there something that maybe if they call ahead, they can get some, we're having a problem, you may want to wait a couple of weeks, or any kind of information, or something we can do to help them?
Yeah, there really, so, two things, a couple of things. The first is that we haven't really had any complaints since, at least since I've been here, about someone that's had a problem with their pool. If they do, they should call us, and we'll see what we can do. Can't guarantee you we could do anything. There may be ways with treatment of their water in their pool, they could clear it up themselves, but...
We haven't received any calls for a pool?
No, we got one this past week.
Okay. No, I'm just wondering.
But prior to that, we've never received any.
I have a pool, and when you run that filter and you add your chemicals, it cleans up. I mean, my pool right now is brown. It's got leaves and everything else in it. I'll clean the leaves off, then I'll run the filter for two or three days, add your chemicals, and it clears up. It really does.
All right. No, so, the filtration system works?
The filtration.
Well, it's chemicals. Yeah. The chemicals are working.
It's treated.
Yeah. So, but, people can call us, and if people have issues with any laundry that's stained, they can call the DPW too. We do have something that can help take care of that. As far as predicting it, it's, I wish we could. I just can't predict on a daily basis what the usage is going to be. I can't predict with the system we have if there's going to be a water break. I wish we could.
Well, I'm just wondering if residents are thinking about filling it, and the DPW is aware that this week, we're having a problem because of the excessive usage, would it be helpful for them to contact and say, you know what, you may want to, you know, you may want to wait or something like that? I mean, if the chemicals clean it, then I guess that'll do it, but I just, I'm just trying to find a solution before we have a problem.
Yeah. I mean, I know from the experience we have here, I know from talking to other towns about this, everybody has the same problems, and there really is no answer or solution. I wish there was. You know, we're fixing the system, that'll help, but over the last few years, the amount of water that's being used during the summer months in the community have been higher than we've ever had. And that's really part of it, too. So...
Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. Thank you for doing this update. I've taken a lot of questions on this myself, engaged in a number of conversations, and I just want to talk about two things. First, thank you for bringing up the total trihalomethanes issue. What you didn't talk about, but I think is relevant to the conversation, is not just that there's organic matter in the Meramec River, but a lot of these issues are driven by stormwater, the combined sewer outflows that we see all along the Meramec River from the mill cities, where the sewer systems and the stormwater systems are combined. And that is a problem that is beyond the capacity of the state to solve, due to the expense and the fact that New Hampshire is involved in it as well. So, it's not, I mean, it's not an effect that's going to go away. And as we see with occasional rainfall lately and with climate change, our volumes of waterfall and stormwater are increasing. So, I want to commend the staff at the water treatment plant for solving that problem very quickly, and for their diligent work over time. It's not easy, and it's a finely tuned machine to anticipate and put in the right number of chemicals and make sure that they're, so they just do a tremendous job there, and we've had the privilege of being able to see them at work. And I think it's really important to continue to advocate on the safety of our water in Tewksbury, so I appreciate that. Secondly, vis-à-vis the brown water, the thing that I see people complaining about the most is the cost of having to pay for lost water, or run your taps for, you know, a few minutes for water you can't use, because you're not going to use it for your laundry and drink out of it, or when we have water main breaks. And so, if you could just address this now, or perhaps in the future, about how we adjust for lost water in our system or with our rates, because that's what I see a lot of agitation about.
That is going to be near impossible, and I don't see that happening. And I would kid you if I told you I could look into it, come up with a solution, but it's just going to be impossible. How would you verify the amount of water? How would you track it?
You can't.
It would just be impossible.
Once upon a time, we were tracking kind of lost water, that was getting lost in the system.
We track it within the system itself.
Yeah.
But for a homeowner, it'd be difficult.
You can't do it with a homeowner.
No.
No. But it's, so that is sort of how I would be mindful going forward, is folks don't want to spend money on water they can't use, or would rather not use. So, I appreciate that. And it is, it's just the nature of a water system, is you get minerals in your pipes over time, and they have to be flushed out. And whenever you're running a high volume, if there's a fire in town, it will do the same thing. So, it's not just high usage for hot days, although with a drought last year, we certainly saw a lot of, a lot of usage of water.
Last couple of years, yeah.
Yeah. And so, it's, just communicating that to the public is important. Will this information be on the website? Is it already on the website?
No, we'll put it on the website. This is just being presented.
I see you have some links there for people to go to, and I'm sure that the local media will reference that.
There is one possible method, and that is implementing a water ban of some sort.
Right. We've never done that here, have we?
Every, every community around us has already implemented their water bans for even in odd days of use of water for outdoor use. We, I think, did it once, might have been voluntary, but because we have, you know, the river provides us, especially where our intake is, provides us enough water, we've never really had to do it. But if you do that, and we educate people, and we monitor it, then that will reduce some of the use in a way that could help the brown water and help people's bills, because we do get calls after the first billing with people complaining about how high their bill is, and it's not because of the rate, it's because of the usage. And when we show them the amount of usage from year to year, they are quite surprised.
Yeah.
But that's, that's one option. We've never brought it forward, because we know it's not a popular thing, but that's an option. And then, continued education, that, you know, water is a valuable commodity, and it shouldn't be wasted. And whether it's on lawns, or whatever people use it for, it's, if you can, if you use it properly and you conserve, then that helps everybody.
Yeah, it does. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm just going to add one comment that struck me in response to something that Ms. Wellman offered, and it pertains to the fact that we are a self-contained system, and we are the masters of our own destiny. And I think that puts us in a much better position than in many other communities. We have the ability to have our own staff, our own plant, address issues, I think, a lot faster than if we were dependent on another utility or agency to provide water to Tewksbury. We'd have very little leverage. So, there's a cost of that structure, and we've invested a lot of money to improve the system and continue to do that. But having the ability to address those issues proactively and very quickly when something does occur, I do think benefits residents in a significant way. That's just one person's opinion, but hopefully, it helps to add to the conversation. Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. Just trying to get to the next. So, next I want to talk about hours of, for the town hall in Town Hall Annex, and just want to run through another brief presentation to the board. So, over the past few months, and honestly, for the past year, we've been talking about work-life balance and the ability to attract and retain quality employees in town, while at the same time, maintaining the service that we provide to the residents, because I think we provide an excellent service to our residents. So, a committee was formed that I put together, consisting of the Assistant Town Manager, Chief Assessor, Director of Human Resources, the Town Accountant, and the Town Clerk, to review office hours and hours of work for the employees, specifically focused on the Town Hall and the Town Hall Annex. The committee over the past several months, first of all, did an outstanding job in their work. They reviewed other communities' town hall hours and work hours compared to Tewksbury's. They met with department heads and department managers for their input. They conducted a survey of employees in Town Hall and in the Annex for their input on office hours. And they had departments track phone calls and counter activity during the early morning and late hours. So, they tracked between 7:30 and 8:00, 8:00 and 8:30 in the morning, and then 3:30 to 4:00, and 4:00 to 4:30. As you know, currently, the Town Hall and the Town Hall Annex are open Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 4:30, which is 45 hours for the entire week. And from my review, I have not come across a Town Hall that's open longer. We may not be open late at night, but when I first started here, the hours, I believe, were 8:00 to 4:00, 8:00 to 4:30, and we were closed on Fridays to the public. When we opened back up to the public, I asked, again, a group of department heads to get together and come up with hours that would provide the best service we can to the residents. And we felt that being open early in the morning was a good thing, rather than staying open late at night. To meet these hours, employees work staggered shifts. Some come in at 7:30 and leave at 3:30, others work 8:00 to 4:00, or 8:00 to 4:30, and others work 8:30 to 4:30. The number of hours, as I mentioned, that we're open to the public on a weekly basis is longer than most communities, and our employees work longer than most employees in other communities. This next slide, just, without going through it in detail, just gives you an indication of the towns that responded to our survey, to the survey of the committee, and these are the ones that are in our area, and some that are a little bit out of our area. They did look at many other towns. This is just a brief list, using, using ones that are in our local area. But as you can see from the list, we are higher than most, based on the current hours. So, in the end, the recommendation from the committee, and a recommendation that I support, is to have the Town Hall and the Town Hall Annex open Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, 7:30 to 4:30, which are the current hours that we are open. On Tuesdays, the town offices for the Town Hall and the Annex would be open 7:30 to 6:00 PM, which means, obviously, we'll be open longer to the public on that day. But on Fridays, we would be open 7:30 to 12:30, closing in the afternoon. And that's what we're seeing most communities are doing. Again, they're not working as many hours open as our Town Hall, but closing Friday afternoons, if not completely closing entirely on Fridays, we're seeing, we are seeing in other communities, if not communities, moving in that direction. It's important to note, and it's not on the slide that you're looking at, but this would be done, this recommendation, if we move forward with it, would be on a trial basis. We do it on a temporary basis, and it can be stopped at any time at the sole discretion of the Town Manager. That would be the agreement, and an agreement we would have with the union. The total number of hours that the Town Hall will be open would be 42 and 1/2 hours, which is still one of the higher amounts of time a Town Hall is open, based on the survey we have. We've dropped from the 45 hours that we're currently open, but it's still a high amount of hours compared to the previous list that I showed. There's no reduction in our work hours for the employees, just a change in hours for the Town Hall. The new hours will maintain the 7:30 in the morning opening, which seems to generate the most traffic that we have in the building. On Tuesdays, we'll be open longer for those residents that can't get here at 4:30, so it gives them an opportunity to plan to be here on Tuesday evenings. And on Fridays, even though we're closing early, we're still open five hours, which is a good amount of time if someone needs to conduct business. It's also important to note a couple of things, that with the recent expansion of our online services, residents should have access to conduct town business even when we're closed. And in the past, the department heads and employees in all of the offices have been very accommodating to someone that can't be here during our regular hours. People have waited, or made other adjustments for people to be provided the service they need if they can't be here during our regular work hours, and that will continue even under the new recommended hours that we're talking about. The Senior Center also plans to match these hours. They are currently open 8:00 to 4:30. The benefits to changing the hours, one, will provide one night with evening hours for those who cannot make it to 4:30. It will allow the town a better chance of retaining and attracting quality employees during a time when the market is very, very competitive, and people that are talented and skilled really have an opportunity to move from place to place, and if the work hours are better, that's a big attraction to them. And we hear it when people even apply for jobs here, and I'll give you an example. We're trying to hire a project manager for the DPW to work in our engineering department. We've had the job open since January. We still can't find anybody. When we've talked to people about it, or looked at towns that are competing for that same job, a job here is 40 hours a week, in other towns, it's 35 to 37 and 1/2 hours. It's a big difference. Obviously, as you all know from the work that you do, having the most talented and skilled employees working for the town benefits the residents. It ensures all of our operations are run efficiently, and we provide services to the resident at a high level, which we do now, but which we'll continue to do, because we'll be able to retain and attract quality employees. For the employee, it also improves the work-life balance. That's important to employees in today's market, and it ultimately improves the quality of work that they perform if their morale is higher and they're happy in their job. We'll see, we believe we'll see an overall work production increasing from a staff that's already dedicated and committed to their jobs, and again, that benefits the residents of the community. And then, finally, in regard to the Senior Center, all of the benefits that I mentioned above pertain to the Senior Center, changing their hours. But the Senior Center specifically will be open, instead of opening 8:00 to 4:30, they'll be open a half hour earlier every day for seniors. every day for seniors who want to come in. And they were already coming in that early, and the only person there is the building maintenance person cleaning the building, but they're all still at the door, ready to come in. And we'll have one night that's open longer than normal, because Tuesdays, because Tuesdays will be open till 6:00, and that can add programs in the evening for seniors or younger seniors that want to go there. So that's the presentation on the hours. We'd like to, I'd like to move forward with it. If the board is in support to, on a trial basis, to start it in the next couple of weeks, run it through into the fall, if not through the rest of the calendar year, I'd like to get a cycle of billing through it, water, sewer billing, property tax billing, and see how it goes. It may not work for the residents. It may not work for the employees, because these are long days that they'll have than they have now. And we'll see how it works as we compete for, for staffing. And then the other thing is, this is a change in working conditions for employees who are part of the union. The union would go along with a temporary trial period until we discuss a new contract, which will take place over the next six to eight months. That's it.
Any questions from my colleagues on this topic?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Montori, you mentioned Town Hall, Town Hall Annex, and the Senior Center, but you didn't mention the DPW Water Department. Would they be going along with it as well?
No, this would be specific to the DP, to the Town Hall, Town Hall Annex, and the Senior Center. We've talked about facilities and grounds, but we haven't gotten that far. But the DPW will not be making that change. They'll continue to work the hours they work. And in the communities that do close early on Fridays or close on Fridays, it only really is for the Town Hall hours. This won't impact the library. This won't impact the DPW, police or fire.
No, the only reason I didn't think it would, but then you mentioned we're having difficulty recruiting somebody for the DPW, because to other municipalities around, around us, have we looked into what their DPW and water department, did they rotate or any kind of split shifts or something?
So, some do do that, which we've talked about. And again, that's something we'll have to discuss during negotiations. For their project managers, which was the example I mentioned earlier, they may have different hours in the summer compared to hours in the winter because of the construction season. Or they may, you know, for instance, work 7:00 to 3:30. They may work 7:30 to 3:30, which is a half hour less every day. So it varies. Some may have the ability to, depending on their projects, to work from home. But so it varies. So we're going to look into all of that. But right now, because that's a bigger undertaking, and I would stress, this is probably the first step and other steps we're going to want to take as we negotiate contracts and as we go into the next fiscal year's budget. Because work hours seem to be a hot topic in every profession. That's something we'll look at. But that's a, that's a good point.
Well, I see, I see a lot of pros to it, more pros than cons to it. Because I do come by here many nights to come and sign documents when I'm driving home. And many times, there's contractors or somebody trying to get inside this door that raced here last minute, where, you know, we have people that'll be working during the summertime, working 4:00 and trying to rush to get here and leave their job to try to run and get a permit or something that you actually need something signed off on by a building department. A lot of things you can do online, but some things they actually need to come here.
No, absolutely.
Physically, drop off plans, do those type of things. So I think that will be very helpful to a lot of the businesses in the community. I think a lot of business owners will appreciate that, a couple of hours on that Tuesday to be here. The only concern I kind of have is that, the worry if the seniors would be upset that we're closing earlier on Friday. And, you know, I'd like to have some feedback from them to think of what, if, you know, I know it's a trial, but I just, you know, without notification, I would like to, you know, do we put any, did we reach out to the, like Jan and our Senior Center to question any of the seniors to see what their thoughts on it? Or talk to the Council on Aging, run it by them to see what their thoughts on it prior to implementing it?
So, that's, that's a great point. We didn't, we didn't actually talk to any of the seniors or the Council on Aging. We did talk to Jan, obviously, the director of this Senior Center about hours in general. But what we do know, a couple of things. One, just the activity at the Senior Center on Fridays is very low. There's actually not much going on at all. So we know the seniors aren't as out and about, at least in town facilities, specifically the Senior Center, which is more active Monday through Thursday. Based on the review of, you know, the, you know, department heads and department staff watching the activity of certain times of day, we found that Friday afternoons are very slow. In fact, some, one of the department heads mentioned that we seem to get more people coming in that are not from Tewksbury to our Town Hall, because their Town Hall is closed, and they'd need something done, whether it's notarized or picking up a document. But, you know, we can certainly ask, and we could certainly see if the seniors think it's problematic. Our experience is that the seniors are up early and get their business done early. And that's when we see most of the traffic in the building.
Town Hall, Town Hall Annex, I think it's all a great idea. But I've walked into this not asking the seniors first before doing something. I don't plan on walking into that again. I think, I think we should ask to see what their thought process on it, and just make sure that, that programs, I mean, it may be perfectly fine. Maybe something like you said, maybe there isn't a lot going on on Fridays, but I'm not aware of positive of that. So I'd like to at least ask the question, get their opinion.
So would you like to ask for the Senior Center in general?
Yeah, that's the only one I'm really concerned about personally, is just to make sure their programs and any questions. Because I thought during the summertime, I thought they actually had a lot of things on Fridays, like they had shows or things or whatever things that go on, or trips and things like that. And if it's closed, and they come back on like a casino trip or something like that, and the place is locked up, and they can't get in, use the facilities or something, that's, you know, I don't know.
No, no, again, that's another good point. So when I spoke to the director about the hours, I mentioned that, let me talk to the board, get their feedback, and then she's going to talk to the council. And in regard to Friday events, there are specific events that do take place on Fridays. They do have, I think the Swinging Seniors do an event once a month. You're right, they do have trips that come back. Those will all still continue. The center will be available for those, and staff has already agreed that they'll adjust their hours and be available to address any specific events or very unique things that come up on a Friday, whether it's a breakfast for the seniors for appreciation, things like that. And again, they will be open till 12:30, so it's not like they're fully closed. So we can adjust accordingly.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I like the idea of having extended hours, you know, because it's really tough to get here by 4:30. And 7:30 in the morning, it takes a half hour to get someplace. You go, you're in, you sign, and you're out. You know, I actually like the idea of the extended hours, especially on Thursday, but I think that makes it the more available to the public, as Mr. Krappman mentioned, people who work, you know. And I don't have any, any other issues with it. I think it'd be fine on a trial basis, and just review it on a contractual basis when we get to that point.
Very good. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I fully support the pilot program that you want to do, Mr. Montori. I think you will see an increase in productivity, because it makes it easier for employees to kind of take care of the activities of living on Fridays with doctor's appointments, caregiving responsibilities, and so forth. I would recommend having the full Friday off, but it's up to whatever, you know, you're working with the employees. And here, I work in the town of Reading, and we have Fridays off, and we work 7:30 to 5:30 every day, except Tuesday, when we're open till 7:00 p.m. So it's a little bit longer of a day than what you're proposing, which can certainly pose a challenge. But having that full Friday off and a three-day weekend is great. And we see dividends in reduced costs for HVAC, because you're not heating or cooling the building at all on that, on that Friday. So, and it makes it great when there are the occasional Monday holidays to always have that four-day weekend. So that is a competitive benefit. It's certainly something that we talk about when we're hiring. And you're absolutely right, the hiring environment is extremely competitive in all sectors, but particularly for municipal employment. So I, I fully support it. And my only concern, a little bit sort of what Mr. Krappman said, the Senior Center, is it used as a cooling center sometimes in periods of high heat? You'd be able to pivot to, you know, if it's a hot.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, those unique items will be adjusted.
Right. The, the library and the Senior Center are cooling centers, and so that's, they're particularly fragile for elderly when it's very hot. So that would be my only concern there. So I appreciate you and your team doing this work. I think it's important work. And post-pandemic, we have seen all different kinds of ways we can, we can accommodate employees and be flexible to all of the many demands. We know that there's a reduction in ability for caring of our elders, our elder parents. There's not enough childcare available now. So I think these are important considerations to help employees in their lives. So thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Town Manager, Senior Center aside, because I think you have enough notes on that piece now, really like this effort. I'm going to echo a lot of the sentiments. The extended hours, I think, are good. I'd be surprised if we don't find that that is something that people take a lot of advantage of. And I'd be interested to see the numbers of how much that's being used in the extended period of time. So on that Tuesday, we're open later, are we seeing an increase on people who are working nine to five? Additionally, I want to make sure that, I'm sure we're going to be doing lots of education and notification on this. So the website, the message board, another one that's often overlooked is Google, updating your business hours. Now, a lot of people go into their phone, type in the address, and it shows you the business hours. If we're changing the hours and somebody punches in and gets here, they're probably not going to be too happy.
Nope.
And finally, another personal focus, I know we've had discussions on this, really focusing on additional functionality. We upgraded the website. We have more capabilities. So I think we, in the future, if this goes well, may be able to focus on increasing those functions and features on the website, and kind of reducing the friction of having people having to come into Town Hall. So, thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, before you go, so I just wanted a couple of things that were said earlier. So, use of the website, use of online services, we need to educate people more on. I agree, Mr. Krappman, people do need to commit for certain things, but the more they can do online, they don't have to commit, the better. And we need to improve upon that and improve on mostly education, because I think the systems there are just educating the public. Something that Mr. Holland said earlier about the late nights and people wanting, needing to get here later in the day, we're going to track that data, as Mr. Mackey said. And we may change down the road and say, you know what, we should be open till 7:00 o'clock, you know, and close maybe a little bit earlier on Friday, because Fridays are that quiet. We're going to look at all, we'll adjust whatever we see the trends are, because Tuesday will be a good day to, to balance that. We'll be open early, and we'll be open later. And we'll see what, what it looks like. So this, again, being a trial period, will allow us to adjust at any time that, that makes sense. So to your point, if it does look like the evening is working out great, people are here, we'll adjust to that. And, you know, to select, select Board Member Wellman, you know, the use of utilities, we're going to track through to see if we do see any, any reduction. We may, we may not, but it's something to, to track. And if an emergency does come up, and we need these facilities to be open, they'll be open.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm not going to be repetitive, but I'm going to note two things. It wasn't lost on me when you reminded us that a number of years ago, we were closed on Fridays, and a change was made, change being the underlined word, to reopen on Fridays. And my second point is that we live in a world of change right now. And I think you, you touched on the topic, but it can't be underestimated, and that's the ability or need for us to be as competitive as we can in the employment marketplace. I know firsthand in my own business that I'm involved with, and many of our competitor companies that I compete with, there are significant, substantial changes in work conditions taking place. And if we want to be the best that we can be here in Tewksbury, we have to have the flexibility to do that. And, and this is not a change that's detrimental, in my opinion, to serving the public. It's, hopefully, as was pointed out by my colleagues, actually going to match up better with the needs of the community. So if we have a double win, that the residents are better served and the employees are happier, which allows us to be more competitive and allows us to retain strong employees as opposed to losing them and having the churn that is attendant with turnover and lesser quality while people learn their jobs, we're in a better place. And the fact that you're doing this on a trial basis is, in my mind, the closing argument, that there's no monopoly here on good ideas. Try it, see what happens. And we'll, we'll address or adjust as we need to from there. So that has my full support.
And if, you know, and the board may hear, not may, will hear more than I do. So, you know, any feedback you have will be important to us. You know, if possible, if the board's okay, we'd start it on the week of June 26th. That gives us the rest of this week and two full weeks of education and the change of the hours. And we won't do anything with the Senior Center until Jan has her meeting with the council, just to get their feedback. Then she can go from there. So if that works, then we'll, if the board's okay, we'll do that.
All right. So I don't know that we need a formal vote, but I guess unless there's any difference of the consensus to move forward, as was just described, speak up. Otherwise, I think silence is acceptance, in my opinion.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that. You have two Town Council in voices?
I do. So I have one from April 16th through April 30th, in the amount of $4,335 that I would recommend approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, the motion was offered by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Holland. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well?
And then another one from May 1st to May 15th, in the amount of $5,737.50, and I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's offered by Mr. Krappman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. That would be unanimous approval. Do you have anything else, sir?
The only thing that I was trying to mention, the Skateboard Park will be opening this week, if it isn't already open. It looks great. Vinnie Bohm, all the facilities and grounds directors did a great job. So I think the skateboarders in town will be very happy.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment on that? First, I got a call from somebody tonight saying somebody was in there, that it's locked up, and so kids are already climbing in there. But I know they're doing the work, and they're going to open it up. Is there something that's, needs to be finalized, that that's why it's still locked up?
No, I think it's ready to go.
Okay. Supposedly it was locked up with the gates tonight, but somebody was in there, and they didn't know why it was locked. And I'm like, maybe something's painted, or whatever it is, but I'm not sure. The other thing, since we're talking about that area, each year, we get the same call, and I just saw it on the board. I know we opened the water park almost the same time, year after year after year after year. Can we put hours of operation of when the water park is going to be opening on the website to say, you know, these are the, I mean, if we adjust and open it earlier, that's great. But I, I see all the time, when is it going to be open? When is it going to be open? There's nothing on our website to say, here's the hours of operation during the year. I think, I don't think there's been in the last four years, we haven't got a call.
Yeah. So we're opening when, it's the last day of school, is.
Yeah, but we put that up, this is when we open. So when people go on the website, they'll know. And then if we open earlier because of warmer weather, that's great, but at least have something up there to say, this is what to expect.
Yep, we can do that. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to minutes. Mr. Holland?
Yes. Did everybody have a chance to review the April 4th, 2023 mini-meets? Meeting minutes. Any questions? Any questions? I mean, then I'll ask for a motion to approve April fourth, 2023.
You're offering a motion?
I'm offering the motion.
Okay, second. Okay, we have a motion made, and a second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved unanimously, five to zero. Mr. Holland, do you have any board member reports?
I just want to give a shout out to the grads who are graduating this Friday, and also I want to thank Lisa Downey for the tremendous job she did at the Memorial Day Services. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo Mr. Holland's congratulations to our recent graduates, and the high school is graduating this Friday. I want to thank this board for their support of the Pride Lights event that was very well attended despite the thunder and lightning that was happening on Friday night. We had over 200 people. Mr. Chairman, through you to the town manager, I would like to particularly recognize and thank the Facilities Department, the Telemedia Department, the Health, and the Planning Departments for their support. I would like to thank the Police Department for their tremendous support. We had a number of police officers and the Police Chief come over and attend that event. I want to thank the committee members of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Group who worked hard on this, and then a variety of community groups that came out, including the robotics team at the high school, the Tewksbury Titans. The TMHS Gender Sexuality Alliance Group came out. We had Music From the Music Room and Tea and the Gents. We had community teamwork come, the senior center came, Tewksbury Cares, the Behavioral Health Unit. District Attorney Marion Ryan came, and Representatives Vina Howard and Tram Nguyen also came and attended, in addition to a number of local elected officials, including Ryan Lloyd, who is here in the audience tonight from the Housing Authority. I'd also like to let folks know that this coming Sunday, there is an LGBTQ affinity walk with Bruce Schick of the Open Space and Recreation Committee. That'll be meeting at 10:00 AM on Maple Street in the parking lot there. Folks do not have to pre-register, they're encouraged to wear rainbow colors if they want to, and that'll be, anybody is welcome, and that is for the hospital grounds. So it's a hike, so folks that are interested in exploring the, the trails over there are more than welcome to join us. I will be there again on Sunday morning, June eleventh, at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kratman?
Yeah, MBTA Advisory Board, we had, I gave an update on it at the last meeting. LRTA, we have a meeting coming up shortly. One of the things they're doing is they're highlighting the van and services provided to the senior center, so they're going to be reaching out to Jan and putting a, some sort of highlight on Tewksbury and the types of services they could provide, getting people to the shops, the stores, and all those type of things. That'll be very nice to show and get out and promote Tewksbury a little bit. The last thing I have is Memorial Day. I want to thank everybody that came out and joined us. I want to give the biggest thank you to Maureen DePalmer and Dennis Sheehan. Without them, the Memorial Day parade just simply wouldn't happen. They provide the vehicles, they pay for drivers, they give us everything that we need, and they've been doing it for many, many years. Costs them thousands of dollars out of their pockets to provide antique vehicles, and they do it just because of the love of the community every year. You know, we had many volunteers, the people that came out. It was unbelievable showing from the community. We had over a thousand residents that marched in the parade. You know, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, everybody came, too many to mention, and I want to thank, you know, the members of the Patriotic Committee that helped put this together. Nobody knows what happens behind the scenes. It's backbreaking work, weeks in advance of, you know, building these floats, putting chairs together, decorating them, but it all pays off in the end when you get to see all those kids on the side and the curb smiling from ear to ear. It was a wonderful day, and I thank everybody for joining us.
Thanks, Mr. Kratman. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick items. One, we had our first successful internship with the high school. So we had a senior from the high school working with our IT department, and they successfully completed an internship, starting on cybersecurity, kind of helped close that skills gap and get kids from the school more involved. And secondly, I'd like to thank you all for your support. While I was out of our last meeting, I was down at Camp Niantic, Camp Net in Niantic, supporting Cyber Yankee, which is that regional cybersecurity exercise that I do every year. So thank you all for covering down when I was out last meeting.
Very good. Thank you. And I started the meeting with some comments about D-Day, 1944, and I want to echo the comments that my peers have made about the Memorial Day Services. It's an honor to participate in those and to pay our respects, in particular Memorial Days, around those who made the ultimate sacrifice, and it's important that we not forget that. So I want to, again, ask residents of Tewksbury to keep those veterans in mind, because we all owe them a significant debt of gratitude. With that, I will mention that our next regular board meeting is scheduled for June twenty-seven at 7:00 PM. But as many know, we will be meeting next week on the twelfth and the thirteenth, and then again on the twentieth to conduct public hearings relative to license requests for retail marijuana establishments. So the first one will be next Monday evening at 6:00 PM here in Town Hall. Those will all be posted and noticed, and I want to just make sure that the public is well aware of that, and we'll get back to this regular business pattern on June twenty-seventh. So with that, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Mackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Don't all jump at once. Thanks, Mr. Kratman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 8:38. Everyone, have a great evening. Thank you.